I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Today is Monday, February 2nd, two thousand and fifteen. The time is seven P M. The record meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order. Disruptive silence in electronic devices. Please go ahead and call please.
Blake.
Daryl.
Daryl.
Jamie.
Here.
I need to approve the minutes of January fifth meeting. Are there any amendments or corrections? If there are any, I would entertain a motion to pass the end of the procedure. So moved. Motion made by Daryl and second by Blake. Oh, with your favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. This is like you. Second final reading works two thousand and fourteen dash eighteen there.
We received, well, we wanted to receive the units from the special meeting.
Yeah. Would you like to?
Don't you, I just didn't have.
That was July the, January the.
Well, in that order, I mean, it's not a substantive change.
I just wanted to make sure if I had listed everything that we have presented.
Yeah, and you had emailed this thing.
Yeah. I just didn't have the whole mention of it.
Which was January the twenty ninth. And then corrections and amendments to those. Again, oh, with your favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
You want to know the same motion with the other?
You can tag it if you want. If they're okay with it, if you're gonna do it as two separate, you can done motion.
I'll make the.
The twenty ninth.
Second.
You have right, you see in the second material, oh, with your favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Funding request.
Do you skip the second?
I did, I did. Two thousand and fourteen dash eighteen, any ordinance or trans motions nineteen ninety eight dash fifteen.
And councilor, what you received from me was a amendment to the previous draft that included, I believe, some more substantial definitions with regard to a solicitor peddler, and I changed it from transient to interant. Merchant, the definitions that are in there are from various other cities in which their solicitation ordinance have been approved and upheld by the Supreme Court, as well as some references to Black Law Dictionary language. The rest of it is just a attempt to incorporate the conversations and notes that you have had for the last several weeks. So if you have any questions with Daryl, whatever it is, I'd be happy to field those questions.
Comments, counsel?
I've got, I've got a question. I, I think this is intended to target residential sales, correct?
Yes.
But I, I don't know that it does that. I mean, it, when I read it, it looks like it could affect the salesman that goes from business to business or industry to industry. And, and I don't think that's what we want to do.
Right.
So that's, that's the one question I have. And the other thing that I think that we need to be clear about or where this will affect many people, businesses, persons, salesmen, who do some door-to-door things here in the city now and have been for a long period of time. You know, I know, and I, I'm assuming this, I may not, I don't know this for a fact. I don't, I'm thinking of the swan man that I've trucked that I've seen around for a long period of time. I don't, he doesn't come to my house. I don't know him or have any, if that's good in swan or whatever else. But I think there probably, he's one, there may be others that would be prohibited with this ordinance from operating here in the city unless they've got a a bona fide business here in the county or something.
I, I think that is, yes, that's a correct interpretation. And once again, I will, my question is not necessarily because I have an ownership in me and that's, this is how I drafted it. I would say in response to your first inquiry, that's possible. Under the definition, I think that is a possible interpretation because I did, it's not specifically identified in any of the definitions as to simply residential buildings. So what you would be extrapolating from is definitions in both, you know, B, C, and D where it says from place to place. And place to place is not necessarily defined. If you struck that, I think you, I would argue that you are deciding itself to residential because it says living unit to living unit, house to house, street to street. Street to street may have another definition. So that is very possible. You're correct. Under this, under this draft, that is a possible interpretation. As to the second part, yes and no. We would have a limitation as to that, that individual or business if they did not have a formal U S mail I address in DeKalb County or one of the contiguous counties. That's the way I define it. That business can still do, so they can still solicit. They would just then have to go through the permit process.
Right. If, if they have, you know, I don't know that this, I don't know anything about swan. I'm just saying that's an example.
Right, yeah, and, and you're correct. I mean, and, and I would say this. Any solicitation ordinance is in contravention to generalist capitalist principles. Anytime that you were saying, I can, you know, you business can come, you business can't, then you are potentially inhibiting free trade, which is one of the reasons why it can be very quickly run afoul of the commerce laws. I agree with that. My only answer to that is I don't know that you can draft a solicitation ordinance that doesn't have that component. I would say right now, your swan man should be going through the process of getting a permit before he does it. Because that's the way our current ordinance is written. So again, I, whether the, I think you run into a chicken or an egg question, which is which came first, a lack of enforcement versus an ordinance change? I don't know. But I would say trying to get all of your policemen to police, all of the solicitors that are out there and every business owner, you're gonna have to have a very serious budgetary conversation with Councilman McCain at that point. Because you're gonna need a lot more money. But I agree. I, I think those are two very apt interpretations of the ordinance as a rap.
Another, another question, just for clarification. Assuming this stays just as it is, we are, those, those businesses that want to solicit that are legitimate businesses here in the county or one of the contiguous counties would be able to do so for a period of one month for twenty-five dollars?
Yes.
So if they wanted to do it once a quarter, they would have to get another permit each quarter?
Yes.
Or if they wanted to do it twelve months out of the year, they have to come back and get a permit each month?
Yes.
Exception, the exemptions. I'm glad to see you made a change there, made the exemptions for students. Last time we talked about that, that, keep up, does that make, like, do you do that? And okay, so in person, let's go up to the, the police as they encounter or discover these or are told about these solicitors.
Yes.
Like the turn to his first concern, or salespeople calling on businesses, you say there is a way that we can fix that within the ordinance that you drafted?
Yes, I believe that would be possible. Again, whether or not it's a true fix is, is up for some debate because I get paid to interpret words. Other people that have my occupation also get paid to interpret words. So whether or not I can draft something that can never be open to interpretation, I, I don't know. I think that's potentially impossible. But that's the plight of legislative bodies in this country since it was founded. I believe that if you wanted to take out, if you wanted to be able to allow commercial businesses to do this, the possibilities would be in addressing the definition section. If you removed, let's see, go through it again. In, in interant merchant, if you took out, or business, that would probably help address that issue. Under peddler, if you took out place to place and street to street, maybe just said house to house and living unit to living unit, that's what we made. And under solicitors, if you took out the same phrasing. I think that would do it.
I think we definitely need to address that because that could affect our businesses.
Well, I, I don't think this was ever intended for retailers to sell to retail, wholesale as retailers.
Right, I understand that.
Business to business, the same way, for example, swan man. I don't, I've never seen this one man going door to door and knocking on doors. They're called late deliveries. You know, their name is one of known people, call them and ask for, purchase that, really. Come out of their house and say, hey, I'd like to talk to you.
And I understand the intent of it, but I just don't want to leave a loophole there that could cause us trouble down the line. And I think what Chris is saying here could probably fix that.
Basically what you're saying, Daryl, somebody on one side of the square can't walk to the other side of the square and try to sell their goods. And they should be able to.
No, no, basically what I'm, I'm saying, but just take Jean for instance, at her paint store, I'm sure she has salesmen to call on her.
I, I can give you an example, Daryl, because I had one today. He was selling maps. And, and I, I don't know if he was on the ups and ups or not, but I just asked him if he had a permit. And he said he didn't. And so I said, well, I suggested that he might want to go to City Hall and check that out because I said that would give him more validity.
But don't you have, like, paint salesman that come in?
Yeah, you'll have paint and wall covering salesman and things like that. But usually they call you and make an appointment and you know they're coming. The ones that are a problem are the ones that just pop in your front door. And when you're standing there trying to wait on a customer and they stand there.
That's why I'm trying to slow down.
Yes, I appreciate that.
You know, won't you sell in, in your category? If you're selling paint, you go to Jean's and approach her and she wants to talk to you, she does, she wants to know. But now if I say, taking maps into a paint store for sale, that's.
No, that's, that's something totally different.
Yes, I'm trying to get away from, that was that mixture. And I would think the police will go up beside anybody for that. What, what you're most concerned about is in the middle of the day when people are home by themselves and their doors being knocked on.
Right. Say something, the store is owning a business, you know, or a food business at the same time. And people try to sell us boxes and packages. So there's, just because we're a food business on the front doesn't mean that those people aren't gonna be welcome to try to.
That's all part of your business.
Yes, but this could possibly limit them.
And we don't want to do that.
That's right.
Counsel, where in here do you put, as far as knocking on doors?
Um, well, knocking on kind of anything. It's, uh, it references door-to-door in one of the definitions. Uh, and then it goes on to say, in the prohibition in section under C, it says, any person or business soliciting pursuant to a certificate, uh, I shouldn't have. To a certificate of registration set forth in section one fourteen point three four shall be limited to the placement and leaving of advertisements, amples, or other commercial marketing materials. So rather, rather than affirmatively prohibiting something, I just limited to a certain activity.
Let me just decide right here in the last few minutes if we don't want to get involved or interrupt sales to businesses that, unless they have never attempt, maybe we could put that in.
That's, that's my concern.
I don't care about paint, paint stores. These companies or box companies or packaging companies going to be lakes, there's also other businesses related to people, commercial, commercial wholesale.
Well, would it simply be better to just add something under exemption for that, particularly under H, to address that?
Well, yeah, I think you could, I would suggest two ways of addressing it. One, adding it under, uh, H as an exemption, you know, any commercial, I guess, again, I'm going off the top of my head, but you know, any commercial business calling upon another commercial business would be exempted from the solicitation ordinance. Yeah, but you could put that under exemptions or you could try and put it under, you know, D. Just something that's like, you know, any person or business soliciting regardless of, I think you're, I think you're right. I think it falls better under H. Just make an exemption, says any business addressing another business.
Should just add H to it.
Now, do you want it to say business or do you want to say commercial enterprise? And what language do you want?
Yeah, I, I know that you're eager to get this. And I'm, what I'm, well, I, I know that, but at, but at the same time, I think it's important enough to get it correct. So rather than try to determine that tonight, think about it. We could all think about it, offer some thought with regard to that issue. I think, I think I'd rather spend time looking at whatever else there might be a question about or concern about that needs to be further examined and then spend time offline to, to correct it and then, or offer recommendations to change it or corrections and then we can come back to it.
Yeah, I'll simply make a note that, that there needs to be something addressing business to business sales.
If I may suggest, because we've been doing this for six months, maybe give what you come up with, counselor, if you could email that to everyone.
Sure.
And we will look at it and see and respond. Just make it quicker. You reply back, okay, or make your comments and whatever. Maybe next month we, this is.
Do you want to open? I'm loath to say this, but do you want to open it up to the public for other comment on this?
Can we pass it? Can we open it up? Get publicized and we get new, another round of, of input.
Well, let's open it up and see if there's any suggestions that the audience may have that would be going up ahead. I'd like to open up the meeting for other comment on this solicitor's ordinance. Does anybody have anything to say or any comments or suggestions? Please feel free.
This is Walter Greenberg here at County Chamber of Commerce. I haven't seen the ordinance as rewritten. Chris and I have talked several times. We've had some nice discussions over it. And we were concerned about whether or not business people coming into town could go up to, as an example, Omara's or Game Plan or wherever it is and go and say, hey, here's a new product I have. We think that should still be allowed. We would appreciate your consideration of that. The biggest concern, I believe, when this came up was people soliciting in neighborhoods, going door-to-door and knocking on doors. And I think that's what we were trying to figure out how to control that. And I think that, uh, just from the discussion, we're on the right track. And we hope that we continue on the right track. We were concerned about whether or not people could actually knock on the doors or whether people could just hang hangers on the door. And I think we came to a conclusion that just hanging hangers, because we have a few meetings in the Chamber of Commerce that that's what they do. They use as a means of inexpensive advertising for them. The only thing I could say is if it'd be, if the Chamber of Commerce could get their eyes on that before you guys make another discussion on that, I'd like to, like to be able to see that. And the revised revision that your counsel's gonna send out, how's that sound?
There isn't a whole lot. It's got clarification, but be more glad to see.
I, I would like the counsel's input on this issue if I, if I may. One of the provisions that I added to this, that, that I would be completely honest, is not actually in either of the previous versions, but that I found in several of the versions that I've read and, and makes sense to me that I added was section one fourteen oh seven, which is the residential no solicitation sign. And essentially what that says is regardless of permits, you know, situation or whatever, if there is, and, and this is actually goes so far as to encompass even the exempted businesses and the exemptions, is if there is a posted no solicitation sign on a home, you can't enter onto the person's property and solicit. I would like the counsel's input if you believe that is warranted or necessary. Because I, I will admit that that's a, that's something I took from other places. And, and maybe beyond the scope of what you had originally tasked me with doing, I think it's a good idea. It's just one of those, uh, if you don't like it, I'll take it out.
I thought it was appropriate. The only, the only, I, thing that I saw there that I thought was cool and above was what said, residents of residence and subdivision indicate the desire. And I'm not sure that a whole subdivision, unless it's a big community where there is restricted access to the innards. I don't know, I'm a little, I just don't know. That, that struck me there, I mean.
I think we wouldn't be able to sign it appropriately if it wasn't one-way in almost one-way out. There's no way we.
Well, that's true. Everybody's one-way in. Look at your subdivision. There may be, you may not want it, but six of your neighbors may not have a problem with it. And to say that, and to say that, um, you probably could because you're in your, your own neighborhood, but, and they would all know you, but if you have an opponent next fall and we say there's no soliciting and that concludes all exempted people, your opponent couldn't walk in there to introduce himself to, to your neighbors. So I guess that seems to be a bit, I mean, I can understand it and actually, well, I've been out campaigning and somebody's got a, no business at a store, well, I just turn around, walk back to sidewalk and move on. Because I don't want to offend, you know, not that I wouldn't have, I'm not soliciting for this, but it's a different kind of thing. So I'm just saying that putting it out there for all the, all the neighbors in a, in a subdivision, I think is a bit
I
less strict.
I do tend to agree with you actually on that provision. And the more I thought about it after sending it to you, I would almost prefer to change it to something that reads, um, you know, any homeowners association or, because that's a, that is an actual entity that those people have representation that they can make a decision. So it would only be applicable to any subdivision that has an established homeowners association. If that homeowners association votes to have the entire subdivision be no solicitation, it would be no different than if that homeowners association voted that they can only have purple fences.
Right, right. I agree. The other concern with, with this is in terms of enforcement. And that's the only other thing that I thought I was like.
Yeah, I think the only thing that would run into is you'd have to have somebody, I mean, someone would have to be solicited and then called and said, hey, I put a sign up and they still showed up at my yard and, and it would be no different than somebody trespassing, I think. But yeah, I agree. I think, I think this ordinance in, in general has this, has an enforcement component that, that will need some, some looking at.
Set your hands.
Well, I, I just think it's, it's going to require diligence on behalf of the police department and the citizens. Because generally speaking, the only way the police department, in my opinion, are gonna know that someone's out soliciting is if a concerned citizen calls and says, hey, you know, Jean calls and says, Bob Yahoo, the map guy just showed up at my house or my, you know, my business and I don't want him here. Um, because I don't think you're gonna have business people or, uh, police officers driving up and down the street saying, you know, where's your permit, where's your permit? That seems very, very papers to me.
No, someone has to complain. Someone has to force.
Right, and I think once there's a concerned voice, the police officers will have the mechanism in place necessary to address the issue.
Just like I did, just like I did when, uh, police accounted, guy didn't have to permit. He ran out of the neighborhood, went off, went across Mandel Road.
Can I say something on that note of knowing, um, for instance, you know, Scott Chesty and I are talking and these kind of badges that are required to get anyone going around, um, are gonna be of a bright color on a lanyard around their neck. Plus, plus they'll get the certificate. So if Scott's out driving around or Chief Bridges is out riding around and they see a group of people, you know, going door-to-door, if they see those around their neck in this bright, you know, neon colored badge, they're gonna know they're okay. So if anybody would call in, you know, and then Chief Bridges would go, okay, we saw them earlier or whatever. Schoolchildren, if they're selling stuff, I'm not gonna ask that the whole fourth grade class, I don't think we should ask the whole fourth grade classroom, Greensburg Elementary, come in and get badges for each one. It's just gonna be a matter of, if I would contact the schools, once this all gets settled and say, your kids are gonna be selling magazines or anything like that as a fundraiser, would you please contact us to let us know and then I would pass that on to the police department, just so they're aware of it. But I don't think normally, like, has the issue where there's kids from school selling anything, but.
Sure, and I think that's, I think you're right. Just for the record, that was, that was Sarah.
Um, Sarah, do you want?
Thank you. Um, I, I agree with, with both of you. That's an implementation issue that I think you'll have to deal with further down the road. So it sounds to me like unless there's any further public comment there, that what you're asking for is a motion to table the second reading to allow for further discussion.
Is there any additional public comment?
I'll make one other comment.
I do under, I do, Jean will be anyone for the record, and I do understand the chambers, not in Blake's point on the business end of things. But also, could there be a possibility that you could let the business say whether they wanted it or not? For instance, I do have a no solicitation sign. I mean, I've had people trying to sell me drug awareness, want donations. I've had, I sell candles in my store. I've had them trying to sell me candles. Retail, you know, like I would want them for my own personal use, purses, perfumes. We just get one after the other, after the other. We get deluged. And I don't know whether Blake gets perfume salesman and candle salesman and things like that. But it gets almost ridiculous at times to where you can't do business. I, I will the next time. But, but anyway, I guess what I'm saying is could there be that you would put a no solicitation in your business window, which I have one?
I can certainly add that to that section.
So just if you would consider that, please. Thank you.
But, but, does this, how's this still apply to nonprofits? Would a nonprofit be allowed to
Would a nonprofit be allowed to...
Yeah.
There's your example.
Yeah.
If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to table this to the next conference.
One more thought real quick, just to kind of go along with what Glenn was saying earlier. Is it worthwhile to add another line in your exemptions for, like, a business you contracted to come to your house, like this one hand or something like that? Is it not worth, is it not worth even adding it in here because it's not...
I wouldn't think so. If you call someone at their house and drive in, you're the one that... Now, if it goes to the next court, they could still, without me, if I was in this, he would check, they'd be mine.
One quick question, sorry. Carrie Wilder, Christopher, along those lines. When we do houses, we'll be on a window cleaning company, when we do houses, generally because of the nosy neighbor syndrome, what we do is, once our guys pull up, as one guy's getting stuff out of the van to get everything ready to go clean, another guy will kind of let neighbors know. Most of the time, everybody's pretty receptive of it and honestly, a lot of times people aren't even home. Is that going to be, at that point in time, I'm not leaving anything?
I changed your mind since last month.
Okay, I was gonna say, at that point in time, we're not leaving anything, we're just trying not to get the cops called on us.
I'm glad you did come to you. Say, hey, what are you charged, what are you doing?
I'll drop your quote off. Your wife will love you.
Thank you, Karen. Need a motion to table this ordinance until next month. Second, motion made by Glenn, second by Carrie. I would as a favor, please say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Hi, Mr. Murray.
Get your thunder.
Didn't have title, so I just skipped over.
Still under your name.
You get, you'll get it going here.
Oh, boy. Funny request for discussion from January 29th presentation. Yes, you want to start out with, as an order last time, great first schools. What was requested is $5,000 this year. Yeah, it's by Riverboat.
I would never approve.
Second.
Need further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Second, I have Big Brothers and Big Sisters now requested $10,000. Last year, every year, where is it, I think you granted $5,000. Discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think that they made a pretty compelling presentation on the fact that what mentorship means to the youth of this community and to give kids a chance and maybe getting a chance to better work in futures. I'm in favor of increasing the amount. I'll let everybody else speak prior to making one.
I guess, just a couple thoughts on this, one, they're getting $4,800 from the county, so they're not asking for more than that from them, but they're gonna come and ask twice that from us. So in essence, we're gonna pay twice that, plus we don't pay county taxes as well, so we're paying that as well. That being said, I mean, I'm completely in disagreement that city funds ought to be used to pay for nonprofit organizations. So I don't agree that we give any, my perspective. I think we, we're better served if we use that money back in, you know, looking back, we can buy supplies or other things from fire department, police department, and offset money from those departments to put back in our infrastructure, and I think we're better served that way.
That's short, that's a short-term use, so I mean, what about the long-term impact of educating these children for a future, they come back to Greensburg and then what's the tax dollars that we're gonna come back from that, that's my question.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying that these aren't well thought, well thought out, great organizations, but I think they have to get funding from the community. And if the community's not gonna give the money to support them, I mean, I just don't think that's the appropriate use for city tax dollars. That's where your personal giving is, is there. You know, I mean, I didn't, we each probably give a fair share to charities and nonprofit organizations, but I don't think that's the proper use for city funds. City funds ought to be used to pave your roads, you know, supply your water, you know, your sewage bills, your sewer lines, things like that. That's not the appropriate use for city dollars. It's not an insensitive, an inhumane attitude, it's the fact that we need to be setting ourselves up for the future so that 20 years from now, when every road in town needs to be repaved and we don't have enough money in the fund to do it, we don't look back and say, well, how much money did we put in nonprofits that we could have moved over and helped pave our roads or put our sewer lines in a better position, or our water lines in a better position? And I think if we don't look at that, we're being insensitive to the future because I don't think we're set up 20, 30 years from now to be where we want to be. And that was part of what we're looking at in our long-term plan. We've gotta find a way to start putting money back for those things and putting more money in the budget for those things, and we're not doing it. But we're looking at how do we fund Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Bread Alive, you know, where we need to be spending more time, looking at how do we fund those projects down the road? That's my personal thing.
Any else, counsel?
I'll voice my opinion, I'm obviously more in the vein of where Blake is coming from. I, I think this is an investment in the youth of the city, and I think the city will have a return on this, and even greater than if we would put this actual small, actually a small amount aside for other things. I, I would be in agreement to, he talked about increasing it, I would be in agreement to increase it to 7,500, probably not more than that.
I don't know when they kind of started supporting them grant wise, but if they started a few years before we started preparing.
Well, and, and Mary, if I may, I'm just gonna make a, maybe not a not-so-popular statement. I think we've got to get away from basing our decisions on what the county is doing.
That's true, absolutely.
Obviously, we're not agreeing on something, we're agreeing on a lot of things. This is just something I'm passionate about, I, I think this helps our community. I was elected to help the community. Yeah, I want to see good roads, I want to see good infrastructure, I think we're doing a good job of that. But helping these organizations, and there may come a time when we can't, but I feel we're in a position that we can't this time.
Just to hear, Riverboat funds, correct, that's what we're going for? What are the uses of Riverboat funds?
Any place that the council so desires.
I, we could use that to fund supply, street, fire department, police department, you know, and then we could take money out of those budgets and put it back. And so that's, you're not gonna take money out of Riverboat for your, your roads and your infrastructure, but you could use this to offset other things that could be done.
I don't have much... So we have one million of zero, one million seventy-five hundred, and one million of 10,000.
I understand, I don't know, I don't think Blake actually put number on that. I think he said it was in favor of increasing, is what I understood.
That's correct.
Does anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we give Big Brothers, Big Sisters $7,500.
Second. Motion made by Darrell, second by Blake. Need further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Just, just is Catcher Right? Made $5,500, it was a bid as well last year, she was granted $5,000 last year, passed for the second year.
Could I make a recommendation? I made this last year, it didn't happen because it wasn't critical, but I really think Catcher Right is more in line with the added funding resources because I think it's more keeping providing for economic well-being of the community in terms of what it does and particularly the clients it serves and it's, I think it's something that, not good business, but I think business people would be interested in knowing that that service is here as well. I'm in favor of supporting that at the same amount. I would recommend, my recommendation is for the Riverboat Fund, the added fund, as a source of funding.
Do you believe that economic development prospers or...
I think it contributes to economic development of the community.
With those expectations?
Because of transportation vies for workers, where people get into groceries or doctors or whatever other kind of business needs they have, maybe even social nonprofits too. I just see it, of course, in keeping with that, and that's the added funding. We're created to provide for that, that kind of thing. So that's my recommendation, that we, we continue with that $5,000. And looking at what the people provided us in terms of the county and the cities, Decatur County as a unit, support versus other counties and other towns in this region, I don't think they're asking for, we're out of line in any way. I think we're getting pretty good, pretty good, I think we come out okay on that. I don't think we're being asked to do more than the other people in terms of what they do, our budgets. I don't know what their budgets are, but I think it's reasonable. So I'm in favor of granting that request, as you know. And also asking that it be from Riverboat to... Well, I would make a motion, but I don't know whether members want to, we can discuss it after the motion. In fact, that's quite a better way to do it, more, more parliamentally correct.
Let's make a motion to approve $5,000, changing it from the annual Riverboat to added funds. I may not personally have a problem.
I would second that.
Will you make the last second, Blake? Need any further discussion? Agree now, all those say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
You got that, Bridget?
Yes, thank you.
Next up, New Directions. Last year, they asked for 20,000, this year they asked 20,000 and received 15,000 last year. Discussion, counsel?
Well, I see this, as I've said in previous years, I believe this is a, an organization provides for real need in the community, actually is benefiting the city in many different ways, law enforcement and other kinds of ways, but in terms of investing and trying to protect and help people. So I would be in favor of the full amount. Or if council members have other figures that they think are appropriate, I'm not, I'm not encumbered on that. I think that it's an investment in the community, I think that's what these Riverboat dollars are providing for, for us to make decisions about what is gonna be for the term of well-being and for common good.
Can I ask, just to put on just what New Directions does and your feelings on how they'll be?
New Directions, they, once we get involved with the initial investing, now, we cannot call New Directions and have them come to the scene or make contact. We have to offer a victim's notification or assistance to the victim, and at that point in time, they contact New Directions. At that point in time, New Directions will offer them a place to stay, short-term. And a lot of the females, their big questions they have right now is, where do they go once they're out of the house? And New Directions will start from the very beginning of a possible protection order to, if there's a marriage, to get out of the marriage. They will go step by step with these females and assist them to get out of the abusive situation. And right now, they are short-term because of funding and that, but I believe, the way, last time I spoke with them, they can place some of these females in long-term facilities. The only problem is they're gonna have to leave Greensburg. And that, and I can say that the prosecutor's office does also work with the New Directions and the victims to where if they do have to leave Greensburg, they will assist positively, finding them a job if they're, happen to move out of here. So I mean, they do help us out a lot, and they are a 24-hour base organization, so, thank you.
And I'm not trying to sell the bill on this. It's a terrible situation, but it is needed. I do, I do also know the, you know, a lot more education in these schools and trying to get people, both girls and adults, to speed where they should be, actively, they should, wanting to know to report these sort of holding or violence, at least over a little bit, or... There's a lot of things, good things going on there. Counsel? Terry, what do you have to say?
You know, after she, she talked a little night, I, I'm not a lot about it, more than I like. I think it's something we need. I'm awful about it. I'm gonna be in favor of the full amount of the bill.
Is that a motion?
I would make a motion to grant $5,000 to New Directions through Riverboat Funds.
Blake, you made the motion.
Second.
Terry, second. Any further discussion, counsel? Agree now, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Next out here, Bread of Life. Last year, Bread of Life asked for $20,000, we approved $5,000. This year, they've asked for $20,000 as well.
Just seeing the statistics increase from the year before by an alarming amount, starting out with January, a record 429 meals on Tuesday, and this past Tuesday in January, or the last Tuesday in January. There's obviously a tremendous need for what this organization is doing. Same time, I see the, how it was presented... At the same time, I see the, uh, how it was presented, and it looks like they were stepping up to be somewhat of a leader in the nonprofits to maybe find a way to get away from government decision, or funding, or community funding. So I like the thought that's gone behind it. I'm obviously in favor of, of giving some money. I think it's, would be nice to have a discussion amongst everybody here. On maybe what type of amount we're going to look at, considering last year we gave five thousand. They appear to be coming in, um, a little bit under budget. I think we could definitely help with that need. Very agree, and the other organizations that have come to us and feel that, to sit in and see how they can network and educate all together so that maybe, uh, we're getting better use of all the nonprofits. So I'm in favor of, on some, on some level, fighting.
Terry, what's your opinion?
You, you have my opinion, right? You know, I, I will say this, I guess, and I honestly sincerely, sincerely mean that I think everybody on this council, you guys are, uh, really conscientious, great people, you, you think about the community. But it's easy to sit here and say, these nonprofits are here asking for money. It's easy to say, yeah, we've got that money in the budget, and we'll give it to them. That's an easy decision. The hard decision is sitting back thinking, is that really the best use of our funds? And I don't think that you clearly, I, I mean, I guess maybe this is just a fundamental disagreement in our, in our mindsets. And I don't, I don't mean it as a, a down slide to any of you. I don't. This is the use of our tax dollars, our, our tax base. It's not our personal funds. It's not our personal money. We're, we're assigned to be stewards of the city's money, and to use it wisely. And if, if we don't use it, then there's a way to decrease taxes, and that gives people more funds. But instead, we just find other uses for that money. And then, you know, I, I think we just need to think better about.